Good morning. It is 8:30. I will go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on the agenda today is an approval of the agenda. Because of some schedule changes, we will remove number eight, the information on legislative initiatives, until a later date when requested.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Commissioner Gross, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard today. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak, address the board on anything not on the agenda? Any citizens wishing to be heard today? Have we had any online requests to speak?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Next item is the minutes from our November 1st, 2022 meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented, offered from Commissioner Gross.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two today is a request for approval of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Joint Powers Agreement. We have our county administrator, Steve Larson, with us today. Also, Cass County, North Dakota Administrator, Robert Wilson. Good morning to you both.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you for taking on this agenda item this morning. If you recall, we've had some serious conversations over the last two or three years in regards to the additional space needs based on the growth of our region, of our regional dispatch facility. We've had a longstanding agreement with the city of Morehead, Cass County, the city of Fargo, and most recently, the city of West Fargo. Over the last two or three years, there's been ongoing discussion through the current dispatch board of authority, elected officials on both sides of the river, and also area administrators, on how to best move forward. If you recall, this past, actually in September or August of 2021, Mr. Wilson was here the first time to talk to us about gaining support in this board and participating on looking at the potential sites for a facility or remodeling the existing site, the selection of an architect firm to do the design on a potential project, and also for Cass County to act as a fiscal agent in that project. And so through that process, we've had a series of meetings over the years. One of the areas of why we're here today that came up through this process was the governance. I think that one of the, through the JPA over the 20 years, the board of authority has had the ability to establish their budget unilaterally and then share that with the commissions and councils. And through this process of change, I found this to be a good opportunity to look at that governance piece of it and have some meetings. And so, the board of authority, the elected officials in our community administrators have met numerous times throughout the year. The document before you was put together by John Shockley, legal counsel for the city of Morehead and city of West Fargo, and Eric Johnson, legal counsel, or former legal counsel, I guess, of the city of Fargo. And there's been multiple versions. That's been vetted by this group, and today you have what we hope to be the final version for your consideration. Mr. Wilson is here to go through a little bit of the process and also what we're looking at doing towards the future. I want to thank Mr. Wilson. He's done a great job in moving this project forward. To corral just one group of people from an entity is challenging. To do it from five is amazing. And so, he's done a terrific job to get us to this point along with our elected officials. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Larson, thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. It's great to be here. You know, just, my first thought was where to begin. We've had quite a path to get here. Obviously, what we're looking for you to consider this morning is the updated JPA. As Steve mentioned, we've worked long and hard on this. I know, you know, my recollection of when this started was, number one, looking at the facility needs for the Triple RDC. And about the same time, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mary Scherling from Cass County, and a number of others were sitting together and said, well, we also would be good to really have more elected leadership on the governance at the top of the pyramid, so to speak, on this. And so, that really got us into this endeavor of looking at the updated JPA with a lot of input from public safety, of not wanting policy folks to get in the way, so to speak, of public safety, but also have that ability to provide governance and financial oversight. And as Steve said, getting to a finished product when you've got five different entities, two different states, has gone through a few different versions. Very appreciative of Mr. Melton's review and input at times, as well as counsel for the other four entities. I think we're really at a good spot here. Cass approved this at our last meeting. I believe both Fargo and Morehead approved this last night. You've got it up for consideration today. And then the city of West Fargo will consider this next Monday. So, I trust you've had the document. You've had a chance to go through it. I believe you have my memo. I'm happy to answer any questions. But we, you know, this is the product of a lot of effort. Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Ebinger, and Steve were at our commission earlier this month. There were some last-minute questions of just tweaking the language of the agreement, in some ways to reflect our agreement with Clay County on juvenile detention. And there were some elements of that. We were able to pull over to that. I believe the final product was satisfactory to all. So, I could go in a number of different directions, but if you had any questions for me, the structure is here. Happy to answer any questions of that. A comment on kind of where we go from here. I've started looking at this and the timeline for organizational meetings. We now also are picking up some momentum with getting a draft of a potential land lease from Sanford Health. And within our commission, the question came back to me of, okay, well, Cass has kind of been leading this up to this and is acting as the fiscal agent. Well, now with everybody signing on and creating the new governance structure, do we need to get that board empowered, have the organizational meeting before any additional agreements are entered into? And that question was posed to me, and I sort of sat there with a blank stare on my face and said, I'm going to have to check on that. But I think we're, I'm looking to put forward a timeline here in the next couple of days of what could be done either on our end or what should be done as the Triple RDC governing body. And so, that's an open question that I'll communicate very quickly with the fellow administrators on. And that would be the next step after all entities have signed on to the JPA. Would be happy to stand by for any questions.
Thank you. And I know we do have two commissioners that have served in that capacity, but I want to maybe highlight one thing that you did say was that this has really been a product of significant conversations. And I know a lot of work has gone into this. I know the city of Morehead talked about the agreement last night. We've had, over the years, responses from different corners of Clay County about how does dispatch serve us. And so, I really feel that this movement is in response to those statements from all across Cass and Clay County. I really do feel this is the best way to serve all of those counties moving forward. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to weigh it in here because this means a lot to me. I was on the board for 12 years as chief of Morehead. When I came here, I was skeptical. There's a lot of people that didn't understand how the Triple RDC work would be. It didn't take long for me to realize how effective and what a better end product we were able to provide because both counties, both states got together and unified in providing these services. The citizens that they serve in North Dakota have the Minnesota Armory System, which has taken them forward in the next generation 911 at a much quicker pace than other agencies in their state. This has saved the taxpayers in our two counties in the 22 years that it's been in existence, millions of dollars, because we can do it more efficiently. It's provided all the agencies, the fire departments, the police departments, the sheriff's offices, all the smaller volunteer units throughout both counties. It's provided them with more safety and a better system than we could afford if we were separate. And it allows us to communicate with each other in a way, when an emergency happens, it's seamless. But it's got to grow, and we hit that area. In the 12 years I was there, one of the biggest flaws I saw was you had operational executives within the fire and the police departments, chiefs and sheriffs, who knew how to run a dispatch center. But every year, we'd come up with a budget, and we'd have to go back to our respective elected officials and argue it, generally through a county administrator or a city manager as well. And you never really knew how firm you were going to be on your budget until the 11th hour. This addresses what I perceive to be the only flaw in the entire system. And that gets elected officials and finance people from the various entities involved in approving a budget and designing a budget, but it leaves the operational questions to the experts in that area. Pretty much what we do with our own departments within our counties and cities. So, I am very grateful to Mr. Wilson for his ability to herd cats. I am very grateful to our partners in the other agency, particularly Cass County. There's been leadership there that's just stepped up and embraced this. And Commissioner Whalen, who held my spot before, both as chief and as county commissioner, and Kevin Campbell and I discussed it. They were ready and receptive ears. This was before I was sworn in while Grant was still commissioner. But I was involved in this, and we had receptive, supportive ears in Cass County to make this work, and we got it pointed in the right direction. And I'm excited. I want to ask my fellow commissioners to pass this today, and let's get ready to build a new dispatch center.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Good morning, Robert.
Good morning.
I want to talk a little bit about the governance structure. Commissioner Ebinger just talked a little bit about an area where he felt there might have been a flaw in the previous system. I think there might have been a couple of others, two minor ones. And it might have had to do with the voting structure and ended up having maybe a disagreement from border to border and ended up in four and four ties, and therefore maybe nothing moving forward. And that's not always the greatest either. So, this, you know, when we're making this change in the governance, this came with the support of the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, the sheriffs. They all agree that there needed to be an elected body that had some oversight and maybe bring some final opinion to it, such as ultimately the budget that goes forward. With that in mind, and we as elected people also committed to the fact that we need to stay the hell out of the way of operations, that's, we need to keep that to the professional people and let them do what they need to do for the public safety of all of our citizens. So, yeah, so I'm really excited about this final document. You know, Mr. Larson talked to you, Robert, about some of, you might have felt that maybe we're becoming a little nuisance towards the end there because we kept on finding little things that we felt needed to be incorporated. And you had the patience to hear us out and to make constant modifications to the process, and it all turned out well. And I think we have an outstanding document moving forward. And I guess I just want to say thanks to everybody who participated and worked on it. And I do, like Commissioner Ebinger, I fully support this, and I encourage the rest of our board to vote yes today on this joint powers agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay.
To withdraw the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Joint Powers Agreement.
Okay.
Second.
Motion offered from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the agreement as presented, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Board questions? Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Commission, thank you. And tying up loose ends is never a problem or a burden. It's what we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I feel like you two need to take a breath before we move on because I do know, and I know our attorney, Brian Melton, has really offered a lot of insight and input. So, also thank you to Brian.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just going to say that same thing. You know, we talked about all the police chiefs and everything. And the guy over to my left over there, Brian Melton, did a tremendous job in hearing our concerns and helping express how they could be incorporated into the writing of the document. So, thank you, Brian.
Okay. Thank you. Item three today, then, is a request for approval of contract amendment number three with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering for Resource Recovery Facility Project. Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, this past June, we were here looking at amendment number two. At that point, our hope was is that amendment two was going to be the path forward to get us to the end of this project. Unfortunately, we've had a few additional challenges with the project. A lot of the scope of, in our conversations with Burns &amp; Mack, has focused on the fire suppression system. Our facility out there is a little bit different from a design standpoint. We have multiple fire suppression systems, one water, one powder, and then one also household hazardous waste. And so, as I went through the design, I guess, features that we had as part of the original design, they had some challenges that they had to go through four or five different designs to get to the final product. And so, that ate up a considerable chunk of the dollars that we had set aside in June. If you look at the memo provided for you, there are some additional submittal construction meetings, coordinating meetings. And I guess the big issue for us getting to this point is the punch list, making sure that Burns &amp; Mack is working with construction engineers to get the product that we want once it's turned over to us. And so, the request for you this morning would be to provide an additional $44,503. Again, that would take care of the additional meetings and also the additional timeframe in which it's taken this project. Originally, the timeframe was 16 months, and we're now looking right around the 20-month timeframe. So, with that, I would yield for any questions.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, under attachment C in our packet here, part of what's described here, under brief description at the very end, it says, "And the increased size of the project have all contributed to the need for an increase in the construction support." Has the project increased in size?
I think what they should have, the word they should have used is scope. The scope has changed. When we looked at the original contract that they had, the construction portion was 16.5 million. With the additional changes that we made through change orders, we're right around 19 million.
And so, just that in itself, the fact of the matter, that because product became more expensive, did that really change the, did that really have an impact on the volume of work? And, you know?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's not just the cost of the product. It's the different changes that we made, the shifting of the roads, the different issues that we had with having to change out certain products, the door motors, for example. So, it wasn't just a matter of not being able to get that or that it was more expensive. It was some of the changes that we requested through that change process.
Commissioner Gross.
I have a question on the bill rate. You know, I see that bill rate went up about $28 per hour, $2.33 per hour. Is that something that we are approving with this thing, or where did the bill rate get to?
The bill rate, great question, Commissioner Gross, Commissioner Chair, Madam Chair. That is a combination of all of the, part of the contract has submittals for what the hourly rates are for each of those staff members that are part of that project. And so, this is a combination of all the work that's been done and that salary, the bill rate is based on who, on the average of who is working on that project. So, if it's a, ultimately, at the end, if it's a higher bill rate now, it could be a simple matter of fact that there was someone with a higher salary working on more of the hours during that portion.
Is this the highest rate we've been charged for bill rate? I mean, I didn't have the...
No, there are higher, there's higher rates that, based on the different positions, project managers.
Okay.
Steve, I know we've talked internally a little bit about this. Commissioner Campbell and I have served on the construction committee for this project, and Burns &amp; Mack has been present at all of those projects. And they have had the opportunity, over that amount of time, to maybe have given us a heads up that the allotted funds were becoming depleted. And I'm frustrated that I felt we've had such a working relationship, a present working relationship, seeing people every two weeks. I'm not sure why now. There never was a, oh, yes, here's our report from Burns &amp; Mack. You've run out of funds. Actually, here's where you're at. And I agree, there's been substantial changes, and scope has changed, and you name it, has changed. But I'm frustrated at that piece. And the other piece that's incredibly frustrating is if we were coming to the end of our budget, they have still been attending in person. And there's been some meetings that that's important, that they're in person. They're based in the cities. So, if we were becoming, again, depleted in funds, it takes seven and change hours to drive from the cities that we're paying for. It's frustrating. They've done a good job. They've offered fantastic insight. And I know they'll be helpful moving towards the end, but, I mean, these are public funds that you just can't assume the county will pick up and overrun. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Campbell?
If I, I want to kind of go into this very back page, Steve, the little part where Commissioner Gross was asking about the bill rate, and then the breakdown of those hours moving forward. And I noticed that there's, they're anticipating through December 50 additional hours in construction meetings and 30 hours in coordination meetings and 56 hours regarding punch list items. I'm just wondering if they're, if the punch list items there, is that something that they work on from Minneapolis, or is it something that they?
Commissioner Campbell, that will be something that they are here specifically in person to make sure that everything is completed the way that it's supposed to be per the design.
Yeah. And I do want to agree with Commissioner Mojo. I think we want to really watch that. And if we can suggest some of those things now being done virtually rather than attending everything and having windshield time involved, it's not really beneficial to us. And I want to share the frustration with, like I said, we met with them every two weeks, and they've been here. And to wait to the very end to say, oh, by the way, your pre-authorization for dollars is gone, and we need, you know, all of a sudden, we need to come up with some additional dollars. And it certainly would have been nice to be able to have a little bit of forewarning on there. It would have maybe allowed us to change some of our strategies in knowing that. And so, I'm a little bit disappointed in, I'm very disappointed, I guess, in the fact that we didn't, I mean, this just came on us like a, you know, a ton of bricks, $44,000 worth.
And I will, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I did express my disappointment in my conversations with them along those same levels. We talked about if there are different ways to mitigate virtual meetings. If there's a time where they need to be in, into, I guess, survey something based on other professionals that are in town, that maybe we look at shifting our owners' meeting to that date. If officials need to be in town from Burns &amp; McDonald, rather than our normal Monday, maybe we shift it to that Wednesday.
I have one comment. I know Commissioner Gross does. My biggest concern with what's presented is that if you look, they're only accounting for construction and coordination through December. And then two paragraphs later, they said the project is going to be anticipated to be completed February 28th. So, why are we working on an amendment for costs through December when they're already stating there's going to be an additional two months? It just, it just leaves the checkbook open to incur those costs. Yes, we and hope that it's going to be done at the end of December. Several of us walked through it, and we have concerns about that. So, will there be another amendment? Commissioner Gross?
I have a question on the item budget where it says, no additional work will be completed without written authorization from the owner. I thought we originally had a contract that they're going to complete it.
Each amendment has said that. We technically have not been billed more than what this board has approved at this point, which I think is why, but that will be coming, as was mentioned, the middle of October is where they ran out of funds from the amendment, the second amendment. And so, I think that's why we ended up seeing this third amendment. We've yet, they've yet to bill us. They are now claiming they've utilized all those funds, but...
There's funds that have charges that are outstanding. They waited. So, because it says no, the written authorization from the owner, if you wait another month before you bill it, it's already been charged. Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Would it be possible to pass on this this week and to sit them down and get an idea of the, of anticipated costs beyond this third amendment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ebinger, we certainly can do that. I would be, I guess they'd be more than happy to join us virtually if that would be the board's wishes.
Commissioner Campbell?
You know, I think a, something that, because of the numerous amount of projects that we have had going on, and we have going on, and new projects coming forward, you know, this idea of really, the whole fee structure, whether it's from a management consultant or whether it's from the technical side, such as Burns &amp; Mack has, or... consultant, or whether it's from the technical side, such as Burns &amp; Mack has, or Klein-McCarthy, or all of those. I think it's, you know, I think it might be important for us to look back and say, and to look at, what was the original plan, and what was the original dollar amount? And this goes back to, again, when I'm talking about, you can have a project that started off at, at $14 million. And if the vast majority of that, the reason for that thing going from 14 million was to $22 million is because of increased cost of product. That increased cost of product should not change at all the professional drawings and all of those things that happen. It's just an increased cost of the product itself. And now, if, it seems to me that, that's, you know, looking at it, it seems to me that because everything costs more, from that standpoint, that our fee structure should go up. And I, I'm just a little bit nervous about that, and I, you know, I think we need to watch that in all of our projects. And I think we should go back and look, what, what did we originally plan for architectural service on that project? And where are we at now?
Commissioner Gross?
As long as they keep extending the completion date, I mean, we're going to keep charged more. I mean, every time, I mean, now it's two months more into February. Come February, if they extended another two months, it'd be another $40,000, $50,000. You know, when is the completion date? Do we have any assurance from them that it's not going to be any further charges? I mean, do we keep on, I don't know, it just seemed to have more charges from them, and I'm just not very happy with that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, and kind of in relation to Commissioner Campbell's comments, in the, in previous projects, again, we didn't go on a time and material basis, and that, that is, that's been the difference in this project. I think generally, you utilize time and materials. When you have a project that's fairly straightforward, I think in this case, the thought process from, from the solid waste manager was that the project had been in design, and that, that there was an opportunity to potentially save the county money. Now unfortunately, that didn't happen in this case. But, but to your, to your point, I think the challenge that we have on a time and material contract, we are kind of in a tough spot from, from that perspective. Now, they could, I mean, we could end up telling them we, we don't want their help anymore, how we're not going to provide any additional funding, they would just not, no longer attend their meetings.
I guess it looks like we're questioning you on this, but, I mean, we probably should be talking to Burns and not questioning you on this, but thank you for the information.
I would note, you know, we, we have been trying to manage, manage an ongoing cost for project. As we've talked about in previous, with previous additions, we did take additional dollars through our bonding process and the premium. In looking at our, in looking at our total project dollars, these, this $44,503 would fall within the cash remaining within the project. We do have some other, you know, we're not there yet. We have some, some ongoing things that we know are coming down the pipe, but we certainly think that they're limited in comparison to what we've seen earlier on in this project. But just do want to note that this $44,503 would be covered within, within our existing budget.
Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
Glad to hear that we do have enough money to cover that still in this project, but I just would like to agree that I would like some answers to some of these questions before I feel ready to approve this, so.
So there was a suggestion to move this to, this conversation to a later meeting so that we could have discussion with Burns &amp; Mack. Would you like to make that?
I'll put that forward as a motion.
Second. So there is a motion then to table this item. I have to have a specific date if we table it, correct?
How long would it take to get them lined up?
I don't know. I mean, I would assume they'd be happy to join us online, I just don't know what their schedule, schedule is. We could set it for next, it could be set for next week.
So there is a motion from Commissioner Ebbinger to table item number three until our meeting next Tuesday. You'll coordinate with Burns &amp; Mack. I need a second.
I don't know where we're going to get out of it.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Sorry, now, miss, no.
I was just thinking, we were in discussion, I'm sorry.
Now we are.
I mean, I don't know where, they're not going to answer any different. They got their bills submitted. I don't know what we're going to find out from them, you know, it's just, you know, it's almost like, we got to pay to get, get the work done, you know, and it's just, we got funds in there to do it. Okay.
I think my concern on it is, okay, what, what's going to be an amendment for?
Right.
You know, we need to let them know that the level of accountability is there, and they have to explain to us. And if we have to cut back on services here, if we can have fewer, fewer billable hours on this, and they want to reserve it through February, that's an option. But, you know, I think they need to, particularly the issue of drive time and, and all the other things, need to realize that this is public funds, and we don't want to just toss it out the window.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. And remind me, when it gets to that point, that we need to remove it from the table before. Thank you. Anything, anything else on this one? Okay, thank you. Item four today is a request for approval of Minnesota County's Intergovernmental Trust, MCAT, voting delegate and alternate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. MCAT bylaws, bylaws allow Clay County the opportunity to identify two commissioners to be part of their Intergovernmental Trust Board Meeting, which is held during our AMC Conference in December. The bylaws require that this board provides official designation to, to who will be those delegates. Currently, Commissioner Campbell is the delegate with Commissioner Ebbinger as the alternate. With that, I'd yield for any discussion.
Questions from the board. Commissioner Gross?
I thought, well, when Grant was on, I thought I and Grant, Waylon were on that board.
In reviewing our documents with Colleen last, last, last year, both, both Commissioner and Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Ebbinger on that, and prior to that, it was Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Waylon.
I know, I've been on it for quite some time.
Oh, Grant, Waylon, and I, I only attended the meetings. Okay, very good.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody can attend the meetings. It's part, it's just another.
The voting, the voting portion.
Just the voting structures, who votes, we only get one vote, so.
Any further questions? Move approval? Motion from Commissioner Kaylee to appoint as presented.
A second.
Second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
Thank you.
Questions from the Highway Department. Today, we have our county engineer, Justin Sorum, with. We have two items for consideration, a approval of Resolution 2022-36 for the DNR Off-Highway Vehicle Trail Funding, and then approval of out-of-state travel for a national conference.
Yeah, good morning. So the first item is the annual trail maintenance application and supporting resolution. So this is for the Agassie Recreational Trail. It runs from Uland North, five miles to the North County line. And what this application does is, if we incur any maintenance expenses or any administration expenses, then we can request reimbursement through the state.
Questions from the board?
Move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve Resolution 2022-36. Second. A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
Then the second item I have is approval for out-of-state travel. So this is to attend the National County Engineer Conference. It is in Baldwin County, Alabama. So the conference runs from April 16th through the 19th, and this is in the budget for 2023. So this is a well-attended event by county engineers from Minnesota and throughout the U.S., with many technical sessions and networking opportunities.
Okay. Now, if you come back with any SEC football garb, make sure.
Better have a hog on it.
Better have a hog on it. Sorry. Any further discussion on this, or questions?
Move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve, and a second from Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
And then, I just did want to mention that this week is Winter Hazard Awareness Week, so it is on our county spotlight. So each day highlights a different hazard with videos and information regarding the hazard, and Minnesota's HSEM does sponsor this, as well as the National Weather Service.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. Since you've, Justin, since you've taken over as the Highway Engineer, have you, have you been in contact with the different school districts regarding winter?
So we did, in the past, we reached out to all the different bus companies, and we used to hold a meeting regarding this. In the last two years, we have sent out an email, and there just hasn't been any interest in it.
Have you offered that again?
Yes, we did offer it this fall.
Okay, thank you.
And I know, as you work, work towards your plan for how roads get opened, that's really important, because I know Morehead School District, for instance, which is a large, large portion of the transportation piece, has their youngest routes for kids, picking kids up at 6:30.
True.
And, you know, I know that, that sometimes conflict, you can't plow a whole route.
Right.
Certainly being aware that we have buses on roads, making sure we can open up the
What gets open first, and.
Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
So when you attend this conference, will you bring home an assistant county engineer with you?
I hope so.
FYI, that position is still open.
But if he is an Alabama fan, I don't know if I'll want to bring him back.
I don't know if Dave will want that either.
We can always convert him. Vikings are easy to root for this year.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
The next item today, number six, a request for approval of Small Government Enterprise Agreement with ESRI, our Information Services Director, Mark Sloan. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm here today to talk about the software that our, that we use for our geographic information system. We purchase it from a company called ESRI, which stands for Environmental Services Research Institute. They provide the GIS software that most governments use. It's a very robust suite of software, and it provides us a lot of capacities and capabilities. The company is, came up many years ago with a, with a plan where they provide an enterprise agreement, where we pay a flat fee per year. Instead of buying the software in pieces for, for individual uses, we just pay a fee as an organization, and that allows us use of their software. And the fee is based on our population, and then we, we, we have access to the desktop software, the professional-level software, the cloud-based systems. If we need to spool up more servers, it doesn't cost us anymore, it's just that we have access to this huge array of resources from them without any additional costs. It's really a, a good thing for us as far as budgeting. It saves us money, and it makes things a lot more effective for us as, as GIS people. This contract is a three-year contract, so every third year, I come here and ask you to sign that, so that we can continue using that software at that, at that rate. The money for this is in our budget. We already knew how much it was going to cost, so we planned for it from the very beginning, and it's, it's a good deal for us.
Thank you very much, Mark. Questions from the board on this?
Move approval.
A motion to approve?
Second.
A second, so a motion from Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Ebbinger. I agree, this has been, appears to be a great software, and you utilize it well. And I know you work with a variety of departments with it, so thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. I also want to mention that tomorrow is GIS Day. So it's a big holiday for us GIS people. Come on over, we'll have an open house from 11 to 3 over at our workspace over at the Government Center. We'll have cookies and some treats, and we'll be showing off some of the latest products that we're using and how we're benefiting it. So happy early GIS Day to you all.
Woo-hoo. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that.
Madam Chair, before you walk off, Mark, I don't know that everybody listening knows what GIS is, it's, you know, one of those acronyms we throw around, but it's Geographic Information Services. And it's not just, you know, looking up who owns what property on a map. This is, Mark describes his department as small but mighty. They help us make really great informed decisions, using this framework of visualizing geographic and spatial data. And we used it for a lot of our county buildings. And maybe you want to just highlight some of the, the things that we use GIS for.
Thank you. It was instrumental in redistricting.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, the next item, number seven today, is a request to accept the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grants. Our Director, Gabe Tweetin, and that's 2021.
2021. Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, so, here to actually ask that we accept the grant funding. So the way the grant works, the Emergency Management Performance Grant works through HSEM is, we, we sign the grant agreement prior to the year, and then they make us whole after the grant's been executed. So they're a little behind this year. Generally, we're doing this in, like, say, May or June. They're behind this year, so we're just getting that out now. Hopefully, things will get back on track. And I know Director Kelly from HSEM is trying to work on a, a plan so we can actually accept the funds prior to or at the beginning of the grant cycle. So the amount is $33,582, and it's a matching grant.
Questions from the board?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Ebbinger. Second. Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion. I was saving part of this for my reports, but, Gabe, you do a great job representing all corners of our county. And last week, when you bring Homeland Security Emergency Management to do those senior elected official trainings, trainings that are attended from, with county staff and elected officials from Clay County, and City of Morehead staff and elected officials, we had a fire chief from Barnesville. And the ability to bring them to us and really work through situations to respond to our community when it's in crisis, I feel is one of the best trainings I've attended while being on this board. And I, I know you've done a great job of fostering that relationship with leadership at the state level and making, having them come to us. Just thank you from me, I appreciate it very much. And also, your, your leadership with our ARPA and CARES Act Committee to really lead and help us find areas to utilize those funds has been quite helpful. So as we approve this grant, it really is a testament to the work that you do and continue to do. It really is a benefit to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your attendance. It's easy to line this stuff up when, when people are receptive. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you. Next item is a request to fill a vacancy for a full-time deputy auditor. Our county auditor treasurer, Lori Johnson.
Good morning. I had a resignation in my motor vehicle department, and I'm requesting permission to fill that. Her last day was actually last week, on the 10th. So, and so we do have the money in the budget for the rest of the year, and next year.
So in your request, sorry, Commissioner Campbell, in your request, the effective date is December 2022, is that because?
Yeah, because we would have to advertise and do interviews, and so it wouldn't be until December that we'd be able to get somebody on at the earliest.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell, did you have a question?
I just was going to. I just was going to move approval.
Okay, a motion to approve the request from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Campbell, that includes the backfill?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? Commissioner Gross.
Oh, I just had a question. Not that it makes any difference, but this is a long time employee or just?
This person has been there about, about a year, maybe a little bit more. Needed a little bit more flexibility.
Well, I know that there's been challenges with staffing and, and I, really certainly you've met the challenges that have been out there in terms of wait time. Staff just doesn't.
And thank you for your support because that has really made a big difference to, when we added the staff that we have added in the last few years, it really has made a big difference.
Good, good. Any further discussion? There is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you very much.
And I'm not going to let you go without thanking you and your department for the huge, huge work that you do to complete the election. I know it's a substantial amount of work. You work with all of the townships and polling sites, all of our cities. I believe our county was one of the fastest to turn around results, if you were a fact checker on the Secretary of State website. And that is a testament to the work that you all do. So thank you very much. So appreciated.
Thank you very much. My coworkers are awesome. We've had trainings and our clerks were trained and so to get everybody in here as quick as everybody did, everybody had their paperwork done. And again, my, my coworkers are just fantastic.
The only suggestion I would have, I know with, as townships are changing, there was some confusion from residents of townships just about where to actually go on that day. And that's, that's not on you, but I think we need to communicate to those townships what elections will look like going forward so that they can communicate it to residents. So simple as sending maybe a, a postcard out that he'll be anticipating.
We actually did do that this year with the redistricting. We did send out some. But we'll make sure, maybe we'll do that to some of the townships, especially the mail balloting townships.
Thank you.
For future.
Commissioner Campbell?
In regards to that, Lori, when do you, when do you know the voting locations in the, from a timeline of, of the calendar year?
They have to be approved by December 31st of this year for next, so at the end of every, every year, the townships and cities and municipalities and school districts have to decide on where their polling location is going to be.
So, so by the end of this year, well, there's probably no elections next year, but.
Not anymore. Barnesville, it was actually on their ballot this year to actually move to even year. So we will not have any odd year elections anymore except for special elections.
So one of the, one of the things, just going to what Commissioner Mosho was mentioning, so in the, in the spring, the township officers have a meeting both in the spring and the fall of every year. And maybe the fall could be too late because that happens to be coming up this next Monday, I think it is. However, the spring meeting might be a, a good opportunity, if you're already going to know that, maybe to just to give a, probably not next year, you won't need to, but the following spring before the 2024 election.
Yeah, I can make, make sure they add it to their, their meeting agenda for.
Yep, yeah. And then you could just give them, you know, those are all township people there and they can spread the word, but that might be a good way to do a, a formal information meeting.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports today. We have Commissioner Ebinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Wednesday, the 9th, I attended the Senior Elected Official Training held over at the Law Enforcement Center. Lieutenant Tweeten brought in our, our second course in this training for emergency response for elected officials. As the Chair indicated to the Lieutenant earlier, it was an excellent training, really eye-opening and gave us a chance to interact and demonstrate that we had soaked up some of the information that was provided by the trainer. And I look forward to the next session on that. And that completes my week.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, we did meet regarding the transfer station project regarding asphalt issues that were going on. And Commissioner Mosho and I did meet and we, we had some concern about the timeframe involved there and what was going to be done. And we had heard what the schedule and timeline was going to be from construction engineers and we were nervous about those issues. And we were down to the, again, the 11th hour of the 11th day, 11th minute, whatever you want to say. But anyway, so we had some questions and so we asked to reach out to Mike Love as well and then Justin Sorum from our Highway Department to review everything. And, and as it turned out, the process was going to need two days to do. They thought they might get it done in one day and by the time 5 o'clock on that, of the 11th hour of the 11th day, it started getting too cold and snowing and sleeting. And so the asphalt work did not get complete and it's unfortunate. We did get the, they did get the West Road complete. That's that horseshoe and going around the west side. However, the area, right in front of Area C, which is the big area where all the, all the trucks are going to be going in and out to dump, did not get done. And fortunately, we do have the 14 inches of Class 5. I think we're still going to have to maybe have Justin go out there again yet this fall and make sure because like we talked about earlier, we could be using that facility come sometime late January, mid-January to February and then into the spring. And my concern is those heavy garbage trucks in the spring, when, when we start getting into the thaw cycle, are we going to be in a position where we're going to have stuck trucks? So, so again, that's just another little headache and nightmare that has developed on this project that just never seems to end with delays, so. So that was that meeting. Then on the 10th, we had our intergovernmental meeting. The vast majority of that discussion was related to the inter, intergouver- or to intergovernmental retreat. That's, right now, typically it's been on the 4th Friday, which would be the 28th. There was a, a request to consider the 21st as the date with the 28th being an alternate, alternate date. Was it 20th or? 20th and 27th? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Whatever those Fridays are. And so I think there was going to be a questionnaire that went out. And then if, if, if the 20th was decided to be that date, then the 27th would be the backup. And then if the 27th did not work, then that February, that Fri- first Friday in February would be the backup date. The items of topics for that, we're going to probably end up having Shannon Foell. We're going to be inviting Shannon Foell from the Chamber, maybe to talk about fueling our future and Sherry Larson from the M B A. I've also asked that all other city EDAs within the county be invited to attend as well because we're kind of, going to be talking about, it's going to lead into workforce issues and everything else as well. But just then, and then in the afternoon, allowing each entity an opportunity to talk about the projects that are going on in their communities. And then Steve, if you want to add on to that, you can. Oh, then I, I did attend, I did attend the Senior Elected Officials Training too. And when I got in there, I thought, Jesus, Mr. Kelly looked familiar to me. And I had an opportunity to talk to him during the break and it turns out that he, he was indeed one of the ones that I worked on with flood issues that went all the way back to the 97 flood when he was in, in the Army. He was a commander there and he, he brought up the old Army Bridge that was brought in when, when the county board at that time that I was on voted to cut open County Road 93. And so the Army came in and, and actually put up this big temporary bridge that crossed that. That, that was, I think I might have had nightmares the next day after remembering. Anyway, but it was great and it was a, as Commissioner Mosho said, it was a tremendous opportunity, learning opportunity for everybody involved. And, and we kept referring to, they kept on saying how there are some areas of this country that aren't prepared. And it really boils down to who you have as your, in your emergency management position. And we have a star in, in Gabe. And I mean, there, he, there isn't anything that he doesn't research in advance and, and have solutions for if there are problems for us. So, and, and Mr. Kelly also agreed with that. And he'd like to clone Gabe for that reason. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross?
I didn't attend any meetings. I just got excuses, I guess. It was a wild rice meeting. I was unable to attend because of medical appointment. Unable to do the training because of funeral and then yesterday I was going to go down to the M R C for the interviews. There again, because of road conditions and a medical situation, I.
That was a good excuse though. The roads were bad, Frank, so you did the right job.
No, no meetings to report on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee?
Thursday last week, I also attended the Intergovernmental Committee, which Commissioner Campbell reported on well already. And the Morehead Business Association Annual Meeting that evening was great. They talked about resiliency overcoming adversity. And it was wonderful to see the good work that the Morehead Business Association has done in promoting the growth of our local businesses and networking. And it's just a great, great group. So thank you to them for that. Also, last week on Thursday, we had a really excellent call with Governor Walz's Advisor on Human Services. Large swath of our Social Services and Public Health Department were in on that call and folks from DHS as well. We talked about a lot of the issues we've been having with fingerprinting and background checks and those things getting through in a, well, we want them to get through in a timely manner. That's not what's happening currently. It was really good for them to hear different incidences where we're really running into roadblocks to work through how, how we can change those things, who we can call and email when we do run into those roadblocks. So I hope that was a really fruitful conversation. A lot of contact information was shared. Afterwards, Rhonda Porter said, I think they're probably going to regret sharing their email addresses with me. So I hope that, yeah, a lot of those issues that we've been facing, we can, we can work through and get folks hired and working in a more expedient manner. The only other thing I want to report is this afternoon at 3 P M, our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council is meeting. All are welcome to join that public meeting. We're going to be hearing from Carrie Tooten, our Jail Administrator on mental health services available to folks in that facility. And I look forward to that. That concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Last Tuesday, I also attended the transfer station meeting discussing asphalt and access issues before the untimely arrival of winter. Hopeful that we can make the best of the situation. I attended after that the Construction Committee meeting of Lakeland Mental Health Center. They're currently expanding their footprint at the Morehead Clinic. That's going to just be great with responding to the need for additional services in Morehead and Clay County. I attended the Senior Elected Officials Training with Homeland Security Emergency Management, as reported earlier. Thursday, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. We had a large amount of cost share amendments that are, in payments that they were working through, which is exciting to see the collaboration between landowners and the S W C D and the watersheds. We did discuss some additional vision and hope for stream bank stabilization and additional trees that need to be planted at the Crestwood site. As you all recall, that's the site that this board supported collaboration with Pheasants Forever and the S W C D. My discussion with them stemmed a little bit about potentially identifying some, use of some of the riparian aid dollars that we discussed needing to potentially spend, that we had earmarked for potential legal uses if, if necessary and will still continue to have some of that. But that may be an area where we can use some of those riparian aid dollars to plant those trees. Certainly if stream bank stabilization certainly falls within that umbrella, I believe. And discussed with the election, making sure that there's an opportunity for the new state legislators to come in and, and hear about the programs that the S W C D is working on and, and see the environmental efforts there. That will be a meeting on December 8th. Hoping to get, now that with the redistricting, we have Representative Keel, Senator Johnson on the north, northern end of Clay County that have not served Clay County before, making sure they're included, Representative-elect Joy, Senator-elect Kupac, and then our Morehead Representative Keeler, making sure they're invited to that meeting as well. That evening, I also attended the Morehead Business Association Annual Meeting with Commissioner Kaylee. And they dealt with the election of officers for the new year. Yesterday was welcomed at the Carpenter's Training Institute. As we all recall, this week is Apprenticeship Week in Clay and Cass Counties. They had all their different departments on hand to allow us to walk through and see what apprentice, apprentices are able to accomplish there. They did include an invitation to career counselors from all of the school districts. And really, my question to them is what do we need to do to make sure that opportunities like this are part of the discussion for our potential workforce? There's not, college is a great opportunity for some folks. It's just not a great opportunity for others. But there are situations for all and that's the, really the, the motto that they want us to continue to talk about as we're out in the community. Yesterday evening, I also attended the Buffalo Red Watershed Meeting in Barnesville. There was a long discussion about permits and moving forward with those permits. Since we are in a dry cycle, they're able to complete some of those this fall. Yet there are concerns about the elevated amount of time that it takes to get some culverts. That's a, a discussion point that Justin Sorum has continued to discuss with us as well. They talked about the need now for, they will have a resignation on that board within the election so that there is an advertisement period for, I believe it's one year for that watershed appointment. We will do the interviews, so that is advertised now, I believe. Okay, so talked about that. And then there will be appointments to their advisory board at a meeting in January. That concludes my report.
Madam Chair, can I, going back to that intergovernmental retreat program, I'd like to say that Derek LaPointe has also been invited to be part of that deal when it comes to that business structure. He's well-known in what's going on in the area with the downtown development area and within Morehead. So he, he's also being invited to be part of that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday and, and actually Wednesday.
Last Tuesday, and actually Wednesday, did a number of tours with Justin Sorum, our Highway Engineer, in regards to the asphalt plan and project. Want to thank Justin and the staff for, with the challenges, even though we didn't get it done, we did get some done, and being out there to ensure that the quality of asphalt they're putting down, with some testing was being done. That was great to have, have, have him available there. Also participated on the 8th with Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mosho, meeting with construction engineers. That's been addressed. On the 9th, we had county management. We had talked about the township meeting next week, safety and security procedure updates, open enrollment reviews. I think that HR is going to be bringing forward some different ideas next year in hopes, in hopes of limiting to have the 200 to 250 people on the last day or two turning their information in at that point. And so, we talked about better ways of communicating that throughout our group, reminded, had a little brief discussion on EAP, and reminding that that is available to our employees should they need it. Participated in the senior elected officials training. Again, that's been covered well. Again, best wishes to Joe Kelly. He announced that he'll be retiring at the end of this year. We have two additional opportunities to provide training, and so we'll have a new presenter in 2023. Participated in the intergovernmental retreat that has been addressed. On the 10th, also participated in MCC JPA prep preparation meeting for the upcoming meeting this Thursday. We had a property acquisition update, acquisition update. We talked about the Clara Cemetery flood project on County Road 59 and 159th Avenue South, City of Wolverton flood protection project, and also the City of Georgetown flood protection project, including the Highway 75 road raise. We had some appraisal discussion, and so, and will be one reimbursement request coming forward on Thursday. On the 10th, I participated on, in the DHS discussion on background checks and fingerprints. Thanks to Commissioner Kaylee for organizing that. As she mentioned, there was a lot of great discussion. In addition, we also had Josh Swanson, the supervisor, or director from the juvenile center there, and they all had a nice opportunity to share concerns. It's specifically impactful at the juvenile center because four-year eligibility is tied to those background checks and fingerprints being completed on all staff, and so delays in that limits our ability to collect that four-year eligibility. So, great conversations, and I, as was mentioned, I think it was a little bit of an eye-opening experience once they heard of some of the challenges that, that not getting those fingerprints and background studies done in a timely fashion are creating. Yesterday, I corresponded a number of times with the Attorney General's Office in regards to our opioid settlement. Both, as you, as you recall, we, we are participating in a settlement agreement through the state of Minnesota and the National Opioid Settlement Agreement. Previous, earlier this, this year, we received notification of just, of our distribution fund that we'll be receiving over the 18 years. The AG's office essentially is going to be taking the money that's available and letting us know on an annual basis. There isn't going to be a, at least right now, a chart that's going to be available to what that allocation will be each year. But we did, we have received, this year, we received $67,619.78 from the three distributors. Next year, we were notified that we'll be receiving $71,065.09. And then, as I mentioned, down the road, we'll find out each year what that's going to be. They don't have a schedule when, when we'll receive those funds each month, but we'll know at a later time. We also did just receive notification, the Johnson, Jansen settlement, or the Johnson and Johnson settlement, our, our share, we are going to be receiving the accelerated payments for the first four years. Two payments in 2022, and then one payment for each of the next year, next three years. Well, we'll be receiving $270,000 over in that one-time payment coming up here this year before the end of the year, and then we will not be receiving again additional payments until 2026. And so, our, my concern was is ensuring that, at, as part of the settlement, this board agreed, or we were notified of our settlement was going to be $2,093,000 and change. I was just verifying through, through what, what information they provided, that that had fluctuated a great deal, and it has not. What the Attorney General did share with me is that, if you recall back at our AMC discussions earlier on, when we heard there was, there were some cities and counties that participated in this pro, in the, in the legal process prior to joining the state, and so there was some additional legal funds that were agreed to be covered. That ended up being about a 7%, what they call a backstop fund. And so, that, that is going to be taken from each county and city's allocation, that's 7%. And so, that left us with, with about 1.9, $1,946,714.11. And so, that should be our dollar amount. What is important to remember is that there are additional pending litigation out there on Purdue and some other, other companies that will also be, once that is, those are settled, will be added to our, our allotment in the same fashion that, that has been with, with the Purdue piece. And I think that, that was it. I would, did want to share, I did, did formally thank Kathy McKay for the work with the nurses, nurses license that this board asked to, to send a letter to, to the governor's office in regards to the challenges that we face as a border city with nursing license. Again, we also did pass that along to the current legislatures and, and legislature elects. And with that, conclude my report.
Thank you. That does conclude our business of the day, however. Colleen's looking down. This is Colleen's last meeting with us, and Colleen, you've just been such a steady to the community that, you know, you're the first point of contact on a lot of, a lot of citizen concerns and outreach, and worked in our planning and zoning department for a long time, and you are the reason that our meetings can flow through as seamlessly as they do. If I ever need anything done, you're just always so responsive to all of us, and I am so excited for your future excitement with retirement. I know the grandbabies are going to have so much fun with extra grandma and grandpa time, so it's, I know you'll just have a fantastic retirement, but we really are going to miss you, all of us. And we did want to make sure that we got you a little gift as a parting, parting gift from all of us. So Commissioner Kaylee, she has a gift in greenery, and so she was able to do that part, but we all chipped in to give you a gift.
Thank you so much.
Oh, we got...
...a small token of appreciation, acknowledging how important you are to us, the glue of, the glue of the office, and I appreciate that we're going to miss your knowledge and all of the past years of experience you have given to me personally when I took over this role. There were times where I had a phone call and I didn't even know who I was supposed to call, and so I always appreciated that.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
So, Commissioner, Colleen's party tomorrow is from 2:00 to 4:00, correct? So stop by the Government Center, folks that have had the opportunity to work with her and make sure, and give your wishes to her. But Commissioner Campbell did want to say...
Colleen, stop hiding behind that plant. Thank you. So, I, I just want to, I, I was just doing some recollection. My first work involved with you was before I was a commissioner, as a township supervisor that had a lot, awful lot to do with more land issues and rural issues and planning and zoning. And I'll never forget seeing you even downstairs in this building when planning and zoning was in the basement here. That was, right? Do you remember that? That was a long time ago, and, and I certainly have always appreciated your willingness to research and your professionalism throughout your career here. And you're very well-deserving of this time that you have coming up, and, and I just always seem to see that when everybody, when everybody I see who retires from Clay County, they have nothing but a big smile on their face. So I hope that isn't because we did things bad, that you're, you're just looking forward to things being good. Okay? Congratulations on your retirement.
So, the first time the Mosho kids come to the office and you're not there, they're just going to be lost. Greeley loves you so much. They know where Colleen's candy drawer is. Anything else? Best wishes. We are adjourned.